I'd like to call the Springford area school district work session Monday, March 20th. To order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals attending to make public comments should be aware that they are being videotaped. Speakers will be asked to state their name and the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight. Mrs. Bicker, can we please have a roll call with who's in attendance and who is on Zoom?
Yes. In person, we have Mrs. Deardorff, Mrs. Hermans, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Schaefer, Mrs. Mindgarden, Dr. Wright, and Mrs. Zazowski. On Zoom, we have Mrs. Earl and Dr. Mozart.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Earl and Dr. Mozart, I will do my best to defer to you as we go through the agenda tonight. Okay, with that said, I do have an announcement that the board did attend an executive session this evening prior to the start of our meeting to discuss a few legal items. Mr. Rizzo, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, with that said, we're going to move on to public to be heard on agenda items only. For those in the room, if you would like to make public comment, please approach the podium with your name and township of residence.
Press the button. Yep, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Rourke, and I am a resident of the Spring City borough. I am here this evening to advocate for Spring City Elementary. Our elementary school is vital to the Spring City community. The staff and teachers work so hard every day ensuring that our children are not only academically prepared, but also loved and cared for when they step foot into our building. While our physical space may need an upgrade, the heart of our school beats strong. I have had two children graduate from Spring City Elementary, and my last child is currently in second grade. In the beginning, we only had one class per grade. We now have two classes per grade, and enrollment continues to rise. The Spring City borough is on an upward trajectory with new homes, businesses, and community improvements continuing to be planned and implemented. I spent yesterday preparing raffle baskets for our fundraiser at the end of the week, and I was struck at how many local businesses want to support Spring City Elementary. They want to help a school that is a gathering space in a small community, one that strives to welcome all of our families as we work every day to strengthen our neighborhood bonds. I understand that the role of the school board is to ensure fiscal responsibility throughout the district, but isn't it also to ensure a safe, inclusive space for our children, not only to learn how to be good students, but also great humans? By keeping Spring City Elementary open with the necessary upgrades to ensure a safe learning environment, you will be laying the foundation for a community school for years to come, one that can accommodate more students, more teachers, more families, and its ever-growing heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See Frye, Royersford. Just a couple of comments on policies up for review, so item 11B1. I think making presentation materials related to school policies available to the public at least 24 hours before the board meetings would help the board, would help the meetings be more productive. People would have the opportunity to review them ahead of time. They would be able to develop more meaningful comments, some things that may even help you with your questions. They tend to be kind of detailed and involved, and it's hard to come up with comments on the fly when you're just sitting here looking at a presentation in real time and then thinking about what issues it may raise for the post-meeting comments. So I think making those presentation materials for policy issues available at least 24 hours in advance would be a great help. Also, in regards to the school wellness policy, which is item 11B3, based on committee meetings, social emotional learning will be implemented under the wellness policy as an administrative regulation. However, I don't believe I've ever run across an administrative regulation on the school website, so I'm just curious if those are going to be publicly available documents or if they're going to have to be kind of requested through right-to-know process. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium? Okay, with that said, we are moving on to our presentation for tonight, and I will invite Mr. Robert Hunter, Director of Facilities, to keep us apprised of what the impending vote is on Spring City and just review some of the options that we've talked about since January. Well, longer, but since our presentation in January.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a short presentation which will highlight the Spring City Elementary planning process. This work over the last 12 months brings us to the recommendation of the administration. As presented at the January 7th work session meeting, the planning process identified four options for Spring City Elementary. The primary objective of the planning team was to address building infrastructure and system needs documented through our facilities condition assessment and to solve for projected enrollment increase in enrollment. The options were, one, close Spring City Elementary; two, address building systems and infrastructure only; three, renovate and build an addition; and four, tear down and build a new school. We looked at the operational advantages and disadvantages of closing Spring City Elementary. Some of the advantages are capital investment savings, operational savings which include utilities, maintenance, and custodial costs, possible proceeds from sale of the property. Some of the disadvantages were, Spring City loses a school that's been in their community for over 60 years, redistricting of all elementary school boundaries to balance building utilization percentages, increased transportation costs, limited options for future planning. Option two is a replacement of the existing building equipment and systems within the original building footprint. This option does not provide educational space that we see in our other elementary schools. This would require students to be relocated for one year during construction. The cost for this option has been estimated at 10.75 million and is the minimum amount of work required if the building is to remain open. Option three, this option includes a total renovation and mechanical upgrade to the building, which will provide a new, which will provide an as-new look to the building's interior finishes. The 7,000 suite, that's, excuse me, the 7,000 square feet addition accounts for projected enrollment growth and expanded educational space in alignment with our other elementary schools. The total cost for this option is estimated at $17.4 million. Building a new school was one of the possible options, but as we vetted this option, it became clear it may be cost prohibitive. The estimated $24 million price tag exceeded the amount allocated in the proposed 10-year facilities plan. Administration's recommendation is to move forward with option three, which is the renovation addition. This option addresses the needs we were trying to solve for: deferred maintenance and capital investment costs, capacity issues, increased space for educational programming. It also supports future planning decisions. The investment in this building today is going to be much less costly than an investment in the building tomorrow, given the trend of inflation. Option three is circled in red as it is the recommendation of the administration. This is an unoccupied renovation that will require student relocation for one year. There was an estimated cost of $225,000 for additional busing services for the relocation year. The construction costs have been estimated at $17.4 million, which includes all design costs. The 17,4 million, the $17.4 million construction estimate for Spring City was included in the 10-year facilities plan presentation back in September, which used debt service drop off to fund the project. This chart shows an August of 2025 completion date, which is contingent on design approval in March of this year. Again, administration's recommendation is circled in red, which is the unoccupied renovation with addition. This chart is broken down into three decision-making processes, each having financial commitment, and each will require separate board approvals. Phase one is schematic design, which has a March of 2023 approval date. Schematic design starts with the district meeting with the design team to develop a building design that fits program needs, including a complete description of building systems, interior/exterior finishes, and visual renderings for owner approval. A construction budget will be developed based on the information gathered through this design phase. This is the first financial commitment based on option three, which is $341,000. If for whatever reason the board decides not to move forward after this phase, the district will have no further financial obligation, and we would own the work completed to date. The next is phase two, which has an August of 2023 approval date. It includes design development, construction documents, and public bidding. Design development is when the district selects a final design and the work starts on the structural details of the building. Construction documents include blueprints, technical specifications, and permit requirements for bidding. The bidding phase, this is where the project goes out to public bid for contractor pricing. Once bids are received, they are viewed, and the lowest qualified bid is identified. This would be the second financial commitment based on option three at 1.18 million. If the board decides not to continue moving forward after this phase, the district will have a total of $1,521,000 invested and will own buildable construction drawings for this project. And lastly is the third phase. This is the contractor notice to proceed. After all the construction documents and contracts have been reviewed by the solicitor, the board would need to approve this last step. This is the third and final financial commitment to award a construction contract to the lowest qualified bidder. This timeline is based on approval for schematic design this month, and delaying this could result in a mid-year school move for '25-'26 or push to a '26-'27 school opening. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. So before we open up the floor for questions, just wanted to defer to Mr. Rizzo and/or Mr. Jackson as Chair of Property, if you have anything else that you would like to add.
I would say this is the first step in a series of steps that we need to take in Springford to kind of help bring things into alignment with where we need to be educationally. We talked about the five, six, seven, and some needs that need to be addressed there by, by committing to the Reno-Add project at Spring City that keeps them towards open for us with fifth grade and what we want to do with that, allowing us to work towards a middle school model. It helps us in terms of, if we close Spring City, we have to have a different conversation about what we're going to do with secondary buildings. So, you know, when we look at the bigger picture, this is the first step, but this isn't, this is making sure we step in the right direction first is I think where we need to go. And I would, again, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, I recommend moving forward with option three.
Thank you.
From, excuse me, thank you, Miss, Madam President. This presentation, we've presented it several times. There's been numerous discussions at many different levels, even on a Saturday. What you have in here, we have a three-step process which gives this board the opportunity, or the next board the opportunity to evaluate as we move on. As Mr. Hunter made reference to, depending on if there is a stop, we own all the intellectual property for the building. So if the board decides a no-go on step two, we own those documents. So if the next board decides to move forward with this, that is available. But I think what's been presented by property, it's been discussed in finance, and Mr. Hunter and his team is, and along with the consultants, have done a fantastic job presenting the facts. From there, it's up to the board to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Questions or comments from the board, and I'll start in person first, then I will go to Zoom.
Thank you. I just wanted clarification. So this has nothing to do with the other projects that Mr. Rizzo had kind of mentioned about like the eighth-grade center, things like that. The work that would need to be done on those, are some of the, would some of them be parallel to this or after this kind of work?
So, I mean, they're all linked in terms of how we support the district K to 12, but this is a decision made in isolation in that we're not committing to any other projects. It just allows us to have flexibility for whatever our next steps are going to be.
Any other questions or comments?
So, I had a couple of things. Mr. Hunter, I think you were very clear about the first step and the, and the second step with the dates and the amounts. Just for the audience, I didn't hear you say about the third piece of that with, with the date and the, and the money at that step?
Yes. The, the third step is the notice to proceed for the contractor. So, once we receive our, our lowest responsible bid, that will be the decision to move forward on, on that piece of the project. So we would commit to the renovation addition at that particular time. That timeline, excuse me, one second, that's April of '24. We would have to make that decision.
And what would be the spend at that time that the, the board would need to authorize?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
What would be the spend at that time that the board would need to authorize by April of '24?
So, we look at the $17.4 million budget minus the design fees, so it's going to be the actual construction cost from the contractor at that point to be determined, but we had budgeted up to...
So if it's, if it's 17 and we're spending 341, and then we're spending, I think it's 1.2 or almost 1.2, so that, that rest of that full balance, so about 15 million, would be authorized by the board or would need to be in April of '24, correct?
That's correct. That's what we're going to be using as our budget number, not to exceed the total cost of 17.4.
Okay. And then, so this had come up in property too, and I do think it should be out there for everyone. And I think Mr. Schaefer raised a good point when I had asked about this. But I know these things are being done in isolation that we're talking about here, but there is a bigger picture that we've been talking about for the full district. So, in light of that, my question there had been and really remains, would doing these things to this building change if a different option for some of the other areas was selected? I think that's a roundabout way of saying that, is there a possibility, I think as Mr. Schaefer had raised, that Spring City could close based on the other things that we have discussed? And if so, I don't want to frivolously, and I'm no, I'm sure nobody here does, wants to spend that 341,000, but it's something to at least take into consideration. Is that completely going off the table, no matter what we talk about with the other, other things in the district if we were to do these renovations?
My answer, and I'll defer to Mr. Rizzo, so we looked at the needs for Spring City Elementary and the facility needs, the capital investment, deferred maintenance, as well as the expanded enrollment that's projected in '25. So that's where we made the decision. I can't speak on behalf of any further with closing the school. I would defer any questions for closure to Mr. Rizzo.
In your roundabout way, I am lost. I don't know, because it feels like you just said that there has been talk that we may need to close that school for some rea, I don't, could you please clarify what you just said?
Yeah, yeah, no, that wasn't really, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying is that I, I know we're taking this in isolation, but I do think we need to look at the whole picture of what's happening in the district. Because if we're going to do some other things where, you know...
What are the other things?
Well, some of the discussions that have been around the flex building or the eighth-grade center or any of that.
All-day kindergarten.
And, and the kindergarten, and the kindergarten. Is this still the renovation that we need for this building? Are we, is this still a good, a wise spend?
And we did talk about this in property, like you said.
And I just wanted to bring it up here to have that fully...
Right, understandable so that everybody here can hear that.
Absolutely.
So, were you unsatisfied with the answer that you received at property or did you...
A little bit, yes. I'm not going to say that, a little bit, because I think when Mr. Schaefer brought up that point, is that completely off the table then or not? Because, is what?
I, I'm sorry.
I guess the closure, is that...
I guess, let me jump in here. I didn't, all due respect, I did not understand the question then, I don't understand the question now. As we've, we've talked about, there, this is part of an overall plan. This is a plan that we've talked about, and that includes every facility that's in the district. And I think I gave an example with three little, three little moving parts. So if we did not do, let's say, Spring City, and we did the eighth-grade center, I think is your question, would that impact enrollment? Would that impact the operational, well, I'm trying to understand your question.
I just want to make sure that if we're going to spend this kind of money, even if it's 341,000 and we stop there, I just want to make sure that if we're spending that, that we're doing things or we're planning to do things to Spring City that work for the long run, no matter what other changes we make across the district. That's all I'm saying, that I want to make sure that it's a wise spend.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, I think the administration for one. I think Mr. Hunter and his team and the consultants, we have done a deep dive into this, evaluated all of the practical approaches, including financial evaluations, to be where we are now. What would happen if we didn't do Spring City? I don't know, you know, what's the next bank that's going to go under? I don't know. So, but I think the analysis that's been put forth by the professionals, the administration, Mr. Hunter and his talented team has presented the picture of where we are right now. So I think Spring City, as far as the 10-year plan, Spring City is one of 12 of the buildings that will be addressed based on the financial commitments of the district, based on the financial cost of these proposed projects over an extended period of time. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Mrs. Deardorff, could I pause for one second to allow Mr. Rizzo to continue and make a comment about what we were just speaking about?
All right, so I'm going to approach this from two different, two different angles. If we close Spring City, let's say we close it, we're losing 36,000 square feet ballpark of school. So what did, what does that do for us? Well, that means that we redistrict at the elementary level, and we're at that point going to commit to, in my opinion, not doing any grade shifts, and then we're going to have to commit to doing something with the eighth-grade center that could be much more costly than what we're doing at Spring City. And we're kind of assuming based on where we think the direction is going to go. So let's say we close Spring City, we're now going to commit to keeping five, six, seven the way that it is, and then we're going to have to commit to doing something with the eighth-grade center or building a new building that could accommodate eighth grade only. So I think closing it limits our options. Keeping it open, we are open to be able, being able to, to, to address some of the concerns that I've seen since I came here, which is namely, parity at Spring City. And full disclosure, if you close Spring City, you achieve parity anyway because they're going to other buildings. That's not, in my opinion, the best way to go about that, but it gives you parity at Spring City. And what I mean by that is equivalent educational options or facilities with the other six elementary schools. It addresses or gives us the opportunity to address the transitions, K to four, five-six-one schedule, seven another schedule, eight by themselves, nine by themselves, then 10 through 12, that reduces one of those transitions, and then it allows us to be able to really, in my opinion, have appropriately addressed that middle school, which is, which is an area we're focusing on right now, which allows us to have a focus, and, you know, and if we go that way, again, this is me right now, but it allows us to have a true middle school model, grade six, seven, and eight, where they're all on the same schedule, and we can really target educational practices that are geared towards that grade instead of having an elementary and a middle school at the same, in the same site. So I think it addresses, it keeps the door open for a lot of options for us moving forward. Closing Spring City reduces options. Updating it keeps our options open. And then when it comes, we have to do something with Spring City. We're going to have to do, if, and I think Mr. Hunter alluded to this, the do-nothing option is to invest $10 million to make sure that it, it looks the same, but it's updated. So we're going to spend $10 million to keep it open. I think it makes a lot of sense for us to keep it open, add 7,000 square feet and get the parity that we're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. We'll go to Mrs. Deardorff, and then I want to defer to Zoom to see if Dr. Mozart or Ms. Earl has questions.
I'm actually glad that Mr. Rizzo went before me because that's a big, I think, factor in my personal opinion as one board member about Spring City Elementary is providing an equivalent educational opportunity to the students of Spring City, which they do not have right now. That's clear. And then to, to piggyback on what you said, it would cost $10 million just to make the building look better and a little bit updated. So that's the do-nothing, right? Other than, if you don't close the school, the do-nothing, the not expand or look better, it's going to cost $10 million. And then this project we're talking about to bring it up to an equitable situation with the rest of our schools is like an additional seven, you know. So I think that's very important. And I think it's also not to equilibrate our students at Spring City Elementary as square footage. We are Springford School District, spring. We are Springfield School District, Spring. Spring City puts the spring in Springfield. To talk about a different direction that the district may go in, I don't think that as long as I'm sitting here, I would support a direction that doesn't support Spring City, recognizing them as who they are and what they are, and the importance that they bring to our community. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Deardorff. Before I go back to the in-person, to see if there's any more questions or comments, can I ask Dr. Mothser or Ms. Earl, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I've seen this presentation a couple times, and I think I'm good.
Thank you. Dr. Mothser?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just, thank you. So, number one, I appreciate so very much such passion around the borough of Spring City. My mom grew up there, attended church my entire life in the borough. I love Spring City. Somehow, however, we're forgetting that these students from the grades fifth through 12th cross that large bridge and somehow fall into an abyss where we've forgotten that they live in Spring City. So, I'm not going to, I mean, I'm obviously outvoted here. I just feel that there's an opportunity for us to redistrict, open up the door for some of these other conversations of massive improvement. And this is, you know, I mean, it's a tough decision, but, you know, the reality is for the Spring City community is their kids are going to be out of that school for one out of four years anyway, right? With this construction. So, in terms of redistricting, I just don't see it as a significant, you know, negative situation, but I have a feeling I am strongly outvoted on this. And so, you know, I hope the best.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And as you know, there's no vote right now, and we value each board member's opinion, regardless of the outcome. So, thank you for sharing. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to stress again and again, what's being asked here is a first step. And the board has the opportunity to vote that step either way they see fit. If there is a positive vote, there's another vote. So, I just want to be very clear here, this ask is not for the lump sum. This ask is for $341,000 of a start. I just want to be real clear, because I'm not convinced everyone understands that. It is $341,000, step one. Step two is much further down the line along with step three, and at any time, this board or the next board could say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mrs. Weingarten?
So, looking at that step one, we have the schematics built back and forth, and I know this answer, but the community will be able to see that as we progress, correct?
Yes. Once the schematic's complete, we're going to see that for owner approval. So, we would have to make a decision that this meets our program needs and the building design, and we would approve that.
I assume so. I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that they would have a chance to have their eyeballs on this and take a look. So, thank you.
Mrs. Zalsky?
Just want to say too, I appreciate the fact that there are three distinct steps outlined with, you know, where it can stop or go forward. And while I did go round and round, my question really was and maybe is, I just want to be sure that if we were to spend all three of these steps to do this project, that no matter what other decisions we make in the district, they'll flow from that, and that we would still, and the Spring City school community would still benefit from having had those renovations done. That's my biggest, and I believe you answered that at the meeting, but I think it's important to answer that again here for the public.
Yeah, you know, I firmly believe that. As far as the investment that we're putting into the building, okay, so it does leave us option for additional growth into the building. If it's going to be a grade reconfiguration and/or kindergarten, it's taken into account for that. So, we're not building to the student capacity designated in 2025. So, there is room for growth in what we decide to do moving forward. We will not have to go back and revisit Spring City if a decision is made to potentially reconfigure grade or to go to full-day kindergarten. You're not going to be back adding on to what we've already laid out for this, for this plan, if that makes sense.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
We said that before.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Okay. Moving on to item or section number three, we have an action item, which I know we have been pretty diligent with trying to move away from having these at the work session. However, based on the conversation that happened at the Curriculum and Technology meeting on Monday, we thought it was important to notify the board immediately via email and also via board memo about why we are proposing to have an action item. So, in order to get to that discussion, I'm going to ask if there is a motion for the administration to recommend the purchase of 20, I'm sorry, 2,250 Chromebooks for the 23-24 school year as part of the summer refresh. The purchase from SHI will not exceed 1.2 million and will be paid from the technology reserve and repaid from the technology operating budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second? Okay. So, we're going to go to questions and comments, but first, I would like to defer to Dr. Wright, since you are the chair of Curriculum and Technology.
Thank you very much. So, at the curriculum meeting that we had last week, Mr. Catalano brought up the purchasing of Chromebooks as provided, as part of our 12-year equipment plan. Typically, we purchase this equipment in grades five and nine, but last year, we only bought devices for grades five, and this year is our gap year as part of this plan. So, for the 23-24 school year, we'll need to purchase Chromebooks for grades five, nine, and 10. This is all part of our plan. This is a one-time occurrence where we are purchasing for this additional grade. And so, that means that we need to purchase 2,250 Chromebooks as part of this plan. So, the purchase does come from an approved vendor, SHI, and the purchase is to be paid out of the reserve fund there. And quotes were obtained from two other companies besides this, but it was also Mr. Catalano doing his due diligence in finding us the best prices. It was brought to his attention that SHI was currently running a promotion on these devices with a tight timeline, and that to secure the promotional pricing, we would need to bid, to accept this or vote on it by tomorrow for this. So, we did discuss this at length, and the, originally, we had expected that the promotion would save $76,500. So, again, that's enough for us to bring this to the attention from the committee right here and now. But in actually looking into it further, we're just notified by Mr. Catalano that the savings would be actually an addition, not $76,500, but $151,000. So, this is why this purchase, which is a planned purchase, and we don't feel rushed in any way on this, is being brought as an action item during a work session instead of waiting for the voting session. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. And I do, you know, being part of Curriculum and Technology, want to be mindful of the fact as well that the deadline actually was last Tuesday. And so, Mr. Catalano did make an effort to negotiate with the vendor to see if they'd be willing to extend, and that's how we've gotten to this point today. But, Mr. Catalano, I know in Curriculum and Technology, you had mentioned some of the risks, you know, why we're purchasing for three grades, just so that we can make the public aware of some of that conversation that didn't attend. Do you mind just maybe echoing or adding any color commentary to Dr. Wright's readout?
The devices that the 10th graders will be using next year will be going into the fourth year of life, and the useful life of a Chromebook is five years for updates and security patches. So, if we don't do this, this was always part of the plan, while we only bought fifth grade last year with the plan to do the extra grades here, the 10th graders' devices in their senior year would be in the sixth year of life, so they would be vulnerable and not recommended to be used during that final year. And we will repurpose those devices we collect from the 10th graders into our elementary schools for the remainder useful life.
Thank you. So, I'll open up to questions or comments from the board.
As many of you know, I am not a proponent of this type of approach for proper financing. This is a million-two that we're hearing was discussed last week. Excuse me. But then, I'm also hearing that this is part of a plan. So, I would have, I would think this plan would have been brought to the board before now for a discussion, the same way we do in property. We've discussed property, Spring City, 18 times right now. So, I struggle with this, again, voting in work sessions. We just, this is a bad precedence that we keep doing for proper notification, proper discussion for an item of this magnitude. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, I'm going to respectfully disagree for two reasons. So, number one, last year, the board approved only buying devices for one grade. Mr. Catalano, what grade was that?
Fifth grade.
So, at that time, there was an understanding or some discussion around the fact that we would have to make that up this year. Am I correct or incorrect in that statement?
That's correct. That was also shared with the 12-year plan that I shared with the board last year and the year before.
So, while I get it is not ideal to do the action items at a work session, I mean, I think that it would be irresponsible, frankly, to miss out on the opportunity to save money if, in fact, this is part of a planned budgeted expense. But I understand your point, that it's not ideal.
And I do remember the 12-year plan, the discussion of the 12-year, excuse me, 12-year plan. My other question is, what, why did the savings go from 76 initially to now $150? What dropped down from the sky to they're going to give us an addition of $75,000 in savings?
I engaged with three vendors. One vendor originally told me they did not wish to quote because of the deal registration. They came in last minute with lower pricing, and SHI beat the quote.
Could you repeat that? I didn't quite underst--
I engaged with three vendors. In this, in this environment, certain companies will get a deal registration. If they have a deal registration, they typically get points or money back from Lenovo on the backend of the purchase, so they get premier pricing. If vendors don't have the deal reg, some of them will respectfully not want to quote you, because they effectively know they're going to lose. So, CDW came in last minute with aggressive pricing. SHI, with the deal reg, was able to beat that pricing and get us even better pricing at the end of the day on those promotional items.
I still struggle with this, but I do remember the 12-year plan. I do remember that. So, based on that 12-year plan, what is, what will be the ask next year, since we already have that laid out? What is the ask next year?
Moving forward, it'll just be fifth and ninth every year, and the students will keep those for four years. That is our plan moving forward, and we should not veer off that. The only way I see that changing is if we decide to do one-to-one or modernized learning K to four. But if we stick with what we're doing, it'll be fifth and ninth every year, and that is reflected in the plan.
Thank you.
And could I add to that? I really, we really struggled at this at the table, knowing full well that we have tried very hard not to have to vote at something at the work session, but we truly felt that we would not be doing due diligence to our community, to our taxpayers, if we were to say, no, we can't move forward with, you know, up this to this meeting, even though it will save us the $76,000, or in this case now, the $151,000, so.
But I thought the cutoff was last week.
It was. He was able to work with them and get an extension if we were able to vote, to bring the voting up to this date.
So, no one, well, most people don't do things for free, so what's the, what's the backstory with this?
Why is there a promotion?
Yeah.
These are the Gen 3 devices that we've been using for two years. The Gen 4s are coming out in a couple weeks, which will be significantly more money. There's not a lot of change in the Gen 4 from the Gen 3. I'd prefer, it's my recommendation, to buy the Gen 3, especially for this significantly discounted pricing.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Zalsky, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah. So, can you just refresh my mind? Why didn't we do the two last year? Why did we push? Can you refresh my memory on that?
In 2020, we gave a device to all kids, five, six, seven, eight. So, it kind of messed up our four-year cycle. So, we knew at some point we would have to do one of those grades. It was the seventh graders at the time. We knew in 10th grade, we'd have to refresh them. The rest of the kids are fine. It's either three or five years. And then, in fifth and ninth, they would get the new one. The fifth, the five-year ones would be recycled for money going back in general fund. The three-year-old ones would be recycled down to our elementary schools for use until the end of their life.
There was just a lot going on at that time, so I didn't remember those fine details. Okay. And then, SHI, have we bought from them before?
Yes, they've been our main vendor the past couple of years.
And so, when did that, when did that promotion come out then? That we, I mean, if the deadline was last Tuesday, it had to have come out at least sometime prior to that, before they would set a deadline.
I've been getting quotes on these things for about four to five weeks in preparation for this month's meeting. I would made aware of the promo right before committee, maybe a week before committee, and the original--
Not like last month?
No, no.
Okay.
And then, the original deadline was Friday, and I beg and plead with them that I really wanted to do this. There were talks of a possible LOI, which we didn't want to enter into. And then, after we had committee, I asked if there was a possibility they could hold them for us until tomorrow. They told me tomorrow was the absolute deadline, they would have to release them to the public.
Okay. Thank you.
So, big picture here. It's a third generation, which I'm okay with. The other side of this, they're trying to move product. So, I would think that's part of the promotion also, which is not a bad thing. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to thank Mr. Catalano for your aggressive attention to this and the savings that you are bringing to our district.
Thank you. Mrs. Zalsky?
And they will be here in May, did I read in the memo, so that you'll have adequate time to get them up and running and distribute it and all of that, right?
That's correct.
No, no, no delay on that, right?
They're in stock, ready to go. We'll give them the PO tomorrow. We should get them in two to three weeks.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Earl and Dr. Mothser on Zoom?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. That motion passes 9-0. Moving on to board and committee reports, we're going to defer to Ms. Mengele and Mr. Cal.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March Student Rep Report. We have some exciting things that are going on in the district that we're happy to share with you. So, with that, we'll delve into some past events first. We had National Counseling Week in the early weeks of February, and a milestone for our school, as the 100th Day of School happened on the 7th of last month as well. We had the VEX Robotics Competition on the 11th, the Sophomore FPC Parent Presentation on the 15th, Random Acts of Kindness Day on the 17th at Limerick Elementary School, a Staff In-service Day on the 20th. Additionally, we had Bus Driver Appreciation Day on the 22nd at Oaks Elementary School, and Read Across America Spirit Week from March 1st to March 8th, and that was observed in the eighth grade center, as well as Spring City Elementary School. Additionally, we had the Spring Musical, Hello, Dolly, on March 3rd and 4th, and I do believe that was a phenomenal-- And I do believe that was a phenomenal performance that we had there. And Pi Day on the 14th, of course. Junior Prom was on the 18th, just this past Saturday. And we also had the Color Fun Run at the Brook Elementary School on the same day as well. And as we are speaking, we also have the annual Indoor Ensemble Night that is happening. And our students and staff are underway at Ireland, and that program is currently in, happening right now.
Now, as for some future events, we have the Rock Your Socks to Support World Down Syndrome occurring tomorrow. There's the Spring Ford Area High School Career Month. That's been going on for the past month and is about to wind down. But it's, we've had 21 speakers so far, and we have four more lined up this week. It's been really great to see all the different careers and awesome seeing the activity and the involvement from the people in the community. Additionally, our German Exchange Program is coming pretty close, actually. Our counterparts from Stuttgart, Germany, will make their first visit to Spring Ford on March 27th and will be leaving April 3rd. Applications for next year are currently available for the sophomore class. So if you're interested, make sure to apply. As for other activities going on, in about, about a week or so, nine days, March 29th, the third marking period officially closes. So make sure students, anyone, parents, students, that all assignments and all things are lined up for that as we're winding down. As for the Red Cross Blood Drive, that is occurring on March 30th. Should be a great event. And we also have Spring Break, which I know everyone's looking forward to, from April 5th to April 7th. Additionally, our National Honor Society Induction will be occurring on April 13th. And finally, the Avetam Self-Care Night is happening April 14th. It should be a great experience. Last year, I know they had a big turnout, and it was really interesting to see. Should be a great one this year.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments?
We also have some reminders, if that's okay. So along with the-
Of course, yes. My apologies.
No, no, that's fine. So along with the fabulous things that are occurring throughout our district, we just want to send out some reminders to students and parents like SNAP Prom Dress Boutique still needs volunteers and both students and adults. That will be in preparation for my prom. And, oh. That's okay, I can read my slide. And there are some volunteer shifts of three to four hours. So that can be helpful for National Honor Society if any students are looking forward to that. And as we're going into spring sports, again, we will be relying on Ticket Spigot for ticket sale purchases. And although high school course selection has ended for the 2023 to 2024 school year, any requests, any final request for course changes must be made and submitted by June 22nd. So thank you very much, everyone.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Nope. A lot of exciting activities happening as we approach year end. So looking forward to more readouts. Thank you. Moving on, we are going to defer to Mr. Schaefer for extracurricular.
Thank you very much. The committee met March 7th. And I'm just going to highlight a few things that are relevant. So we had a presentation from the RCTV Club or organization, as there's three kind of branches, I learned. There's the morning show, there's the film club, and they are making a full film this year, which is remarkable from my perspective. And then there's the RCTV, which I think many of us are used to seeing. And that team has put on, up until this meeting, at least 88 live events, meaning they've livestreamed 88 events. 50 of them were student-run, so it's quite remarkable what these young men and women are doing within that club. We had presentations with regards to our high school and middle school sports. For the first time in the district's history, we participated in a varsity boys volleyball game. And I believe they won as well, which is kind of cool. So that was great, and my thanks to administration for their willingness to add new sports. And it's great to see that growth. A few business items, so administration was asked previously to bring back proposals for the growth of the VEX program. That will not be a, an item for this year. But they, they brought those costs back and presented them, and we're going to integrate that into the budget for next year. There was a unified track coach position that I believe is, is going to be an agenda item. Is that right? For next month. How about that? We need to get a few more things documented. So you will see that. There was some discussion around that. Again, just relevant items. And Mr. Edor, if you want to add, if I missed a few favorite things. For AED training, there was some healthy, good discussion, no pun intended there, healthy discussion, about possibly bringing this training in-house so that we can have more of our staff trained. And in the event that unfortunate things happen, we have enough people to take care of that. And one other, there was a request for administration to meet with Mr. Fink to explore getting some sort of big picture extracurricular reporting with the hope that we'll be able to maybe have that for the business of this committee for the coming school year. The idea behind that would be, many times, administration brings requests for new positions or, you know, as the school year progresses. And we don't have any real context of the, of the financial impact. And many of us that sit on the board, you know, we want to support. And so, you know, this was an idea to be able to, be able to have a big picture of the investment that the district makes into the extracurricular activities for our students. Our next meeting, because of spring break, we will not be meeting in April, but we will be meeting May 2nd. Welcome, any questions?
Thank you. Yes.
I have a question. Did you say that you're not adding the VEX Coordinator this year or Assistant?
Yeah, correct.
Because that's on here, right?
It was presented to be included for next, in next year's budget. So it's not a position that we would fill for this year.
Not for this year, but for-
Not for this year, but for next year.
But it's, but it's on the, it's on under personnel.
Right.
For next year.
For next year, yeah. By the time, I guess, you know, you fill it, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Zoom? Okay. So moving on, we have policy with Ms. Earl.
Yeah, you'll see on this month's board agenda, there's three policies for approval and eight for first read. And we thought you might get bored with that. So at our March 13th meeting, we plowed through 10 policies, which we forwarded to our solicitor for approval, and they will come to us, the board, on, for the April meeting for first read. There were five more we didn't get to. We'll hit them in April. And, oh, and by the way, for our community, all of our policies are on the website.
Thank you, Ms. Earl. And yes, Mr. Rizzo, please follow up.
Yeah, just to follow up with that a little bit. All of our approved policies are on our website, under Board Docs. Any policy that is being considered, excuse me, for first or second read is also available. It's attached as an attachment to the, to the agenda. So if you look at our agenda for tonight, somewhere around page 60, 78, or 130, you'll see a list of the policies that are there, that are being up for first read or for approval.
Thank you for that clarification, because while I will never interrupt anyone during public comment, I do think it's important to correct the misinformation. Because when we bring policies forward to the public, as some of you may or may not know, right? For example, what we see under Section 11A are the policies that we vetted in the February policy meeting. So not only do we discuss, and we bring those up in the policy meeting in February, but they come forward for a first reading in March, for which they are attached. And then they will come up again in April, for which they will be attached when the impending vote is upon us. So that is a total of three months for which the public has access to any policies for which we are making adjustments.
And as long as we're providing clarity to the public. Administrative regulations are attached to board policies in their public-facing documents. So it would show up as an attachment. So most recently, we are looking at 246, School Wellness. So the ARs, Administrative Regulations, that go along with that would be an attachment to that policy. If you go to Board Docs and look at Policy 204 right now, which is attendance, we have an administrative regulation for that. If it's not there, that means it's in process and being developed. But all those are public-facing documents that are not reviewed by the board. They're reviewed by my team.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments with policy? Okay. Moving on to Curriculum and Technology, Dr. Wright.
Thank you very much. We had our Curriculum and Technology meeting last Monday. We already discussed what was, we discussed at the table in technology. So moving on to curriculum, basically was part of our textbook review cycle. For sociology, the course was reviewed for this year as part of the curriculum cycle. And Dr. Reinheimer provided information regarding the tech selection. The teachers will be receiving training in May and updating the curriculum documents. So this, you'll see this as a, on the agenda for voting next week. For the English Language Development, the high school ELD teachers have reviewed resources for newcomers. The teachers will be working on creating curriculum documents for these courses. Mrs. Gardi explained that these resources will be used to support students at the high school level and will be purchased with Title III funds. Then with regards to Project Lead the Way, the high school Project Lead the Way course, Principles of Engineering has been updated. Dr. Reinheimer explained that the course requires updating engineering kits, durables, and consumables. Then the big-ticket item, the K6 English Language Arts Program Resources. Mrs. Angelucci provided an overview of the curriculum review process and product recommendations for the K6 English Language Arts Program. The Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts is being recommended for seven years for grades K to 5. And McGraw-Hill Study Sync is being recommended for six years for grade 6. The six-year recommendation for grade 6 is to align with the curriculum cycle of grade 7 to 12, since grade 7 and 8 have been using that resource. So these recommendations come with product training. The curriculum department is working with instructional coaches and curriculum facilities to prepare a plan to support the ongoing implementation of the new programs. Mrs. Angelucci is leading curriculum writing teams for each grade level to revise the current curriculum documents. These resources align with the science of reading. We have received emails from parents regarding this topic, and Mrs. Angelucci addressed the research at our meeting, the professional development, and the resources throughout the presentation. So it was quite an extensive presentation, and this was something that has been, we've been looking into our curriculum department for months and months. You will see action items for curricular resources for the sociology I discussed here, the English Language Development, the Project Lead the Way, and the K6 English Language Arts. The English Language Development resources will be purchased with Title III funds. Sociology, Project Lead the Way, and the K6 English Language Arts resources will be purchased using funds that are in the curriculum reserve. Mr. Fink and Mrs. Gardi have worked on the budget together to be certain that the funds are available in the reserve.
That's it. Thank you, Dr. Wright. Questions or comments? Okay. Moving on, Mr. Jackson with finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Finance Committee, committee meeting was held on March 14th. It was well-attended. There were no questions publicly heard in the start of the meeting on their new business. Through the executive monthly reports, through the month of February 28th was reviewed. Liquidity is at $130 million, including $23 million in bond proceeds for the Giza project. Last year, balance was $101 million. On the revenue, state revenue for basic instructional and special education subsidiaries are higher than expected. The real estate transfer tax revenue achieved 9% of the annual goal. And we're on pace to reach 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. Self-funded healthcare claims are up, but January average, our claims per week was $352,000 compared to February was an average of $272,000. We are having a second look by, I'm sorry, a second look for '23, '24 by Rashidi, which we should have the information on the 24th. Overall, food services operating in the Black, there was discussion regarding the Spring City renovation plan financing. We reviewed the costs, the timelines. There was reviewed in property last month. And the estimated cost of each scenario, very similar to what we did here. Mr. Fink also did state that the current debt service budget and future projections, concluding the budget has room to finance this project and other projects in the 20-year facilities plan. There was discussion regarding the '23, '24 budget update. There was an, there was a projected impact of 5.21 tax increase on February 24th. Now it is at 4.67. The index is 4.1, so we are moving in the right direction. Items recommended for the next board meeting was discussion, which we've had earlier. And at the next meeting, there will be continued updates for the '23, '24 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Questions or comments? And Dr. Mozart, Ms. Earl, I'm going to keep going unless I hear you interrupt me. So with that said, we'll turn on to property.
Thanks again, Madam President. Property also is well-attended. It's amazing this time of the year. Property and finance gets a lot of people. So we're very happy to see our residents there. Right, it's my personality. Some of the items that was discussed, we gave an update on the Giza project. The LED lighting is underway at Evans Elementary, and Brook Elementary is next in line. There was also a discussion regarding the equipment, delivery, and tentative construction schedules for both the HVAC project scheduled for Limerick and Roy's Fort. And the building automation system upgrades known as the BMS is being coordinated for scheduling within the school. There was also a discussion regarding the lead, lead and water testing, which was last done in 2019. We discussed the 2023 start, which was, which will be May, May, which will be March 21st and be expected to be completed by end of April. That information will be found on the district website. There was also discussion regarding the PCCD grant expenditure. This is regarding the School Mental Health and Safety and Security Grant awarded and the projects that were identified by Chief Boyer to be funded by this grant. This, there would have been an action item for approval to expend these grants. And something some of you don't know, I think since Chief Boyer has been here, I think he's brought in probably $3.1 million in grants. And sometimes that gets lost in the translation. But Chief Boyer is not only the police chief, but he's also the chief of grant finding, so thank you, please. So there was further discussion, Colleen, regarding the teacher furniture for the cafeteria table replacement plan. That would be on an item, an action item for approval. There was also discussion of acceptance for a Brook Elementary home and school purchase of, I don't know what this is, a Gaga pit for $9 million. I'm sorry, for-
That is a hell of a Gaga pit.
For $9,000. I'm sorry. I could pay for Spring City. That would be on the agenda for acceptance. And going further into new business, we have, we have a replacement for Officer Rickashan for the 8th and 9th Grade Centers. William Thames from the Norristown Police Department will be start training in May and will not start official duty until August of 2023. And that is my report for property and the $9 million.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any questions or comments? All right. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. As Arhan mentioned earlier, Rock Your Socks Day is tomorrow. March 21st is World Down Syndrome Day, and people around the world are hosting activities and events to help raise awareness of what Down Syndrome is, what it means to have Down Syndrome, and how people with Down Syndrome play a vital role in our lives and communities. Rock Your Socks is a fun, simple way to start conversations that change hearts and minds. You can participate by wearing your most colorful, fun socks to celebrate the ways that people with Down Syndrome brighten our lives. that people with Down Syndrome brighten our lives. The next update is pertaining to water testing. In 2019, Springford tested for lead in the water at drinking outlets and sinks used for water consumption. This test was based on changes to the PA School Code focusing on water quality in Pennsylvania schools. When we developed the lead-in-water testing plan, we adopted a three-year testing cycle. Testing was supposed to reoccur in 2022, but due to COVID protocols that had drinking water outlets taken out of service, so we deferred to 2023. So just again, there is no evidence of water quality issues in any of our buildings or schools. This is just a proactive approach to assure that water, assure the water quality in our schools. The next, this is pertaining to the class of 2036. Unbelievable. Kindergarten registration is open for our class of 2036. Children living in the Springford Year School District, who will be five years old by August 31st, are eligible to attend kindergarten next school year, and you can get more information at springford.net. And finally, we're excited to be hosting a college and career fair this Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school gym. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Giambattista.
Thank you, and good evening. It's certainly been a busy weekend here at Springford in all areas of extracurriculum, music, and athletics. On Friday night, both the Blue and Gold Jazz Ensemble performed at the Cal vacade of bands Phoenixville Jazz Show. Both performed very well, and Bobby Peladino, 11th grader, won a soloist medal on the drumset. Saturday, our Winter Guard attended the World Guard International Eastern U.S. Regional at Bethlehem Liberty High School. They placed eighth in their group. The Winter Percussion Team attended the World Guard International Eastern U.S. Regional at Monroe Township High School in New Jersey. They placed seventh in their division and were awarded a spot in the final competition. Both guard and percussion are headed to the World Championships in Dayton, Ohio this year. Percussion is currently ranked top 10, making them a strong contender for making it to the World Finals. Finally, this Thursday, we have four students who made it to the PA Music Educators Association, Region Six Band. Let's hope that one of them makes it to the PMEA All-State. In the world of athletics, boys' basketball, team defeated State College in Mechanics, boys' basketball team defeated State College in Mechanicsburg on Saturday by a score of 45 to 39 to advance to the PIAA semifinals for the first time in school history. The team will advance to the PIAA on Tuesday night at Coatesville, 7 o'clock versus Reading. Springford has an allotment of tickets that are on sale now. Any remaining tickets will be released to the public. If you plan on attending, please consider purchasing your tickets as soon as possible. RCTV is exploring coverage options and will be posting updates on RCTV's Facebook page. Boys bowling. The bowling team finished sixth at the state team tournament on Saturday, which is the highest finish for the Springford Bowling Team. Boys and girls swim team. They had an exceptional PIAA state meet this weekend. The girls' team finished an amazing 15th place, which is the best finish ever, in the state behind the blue bloods of PA, swimming behind North Penn, Conestoga, Upper Dublin, North Allegheny, Hershey, and Haverhill. And finally, the Special Education Parents Advisory Committee meeting will be this Thursday, 7 o'clock, in the Herda Center. Next week, Mr. Miscavige will be bringing forward some of the athletes to honor them and their performance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Nope, just that it's great to see that our students are achieving success in what they love, so thank you. Okay, with that said, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good evening. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we're going to go to the voting portion of our meeting for next week. So any questions or comments with regards to minutes, sections A and B? Okay, personnel, A through U. And Dr. Moats or Ms. Earl, just feel free to come off mute if you do have a comment or question. Mrs. Zasowski?
So just as, and I, I think that I've maybe raised this before, but I'm seeing this transition coordinator, I'm not sure why that that has to now come in-house where it was, I think, not in-house previously. And then I also have questions about why are we doing that and adding some of these extracurricular positions? We're talking about some, some new hires here, and wouldn't we be talking about that? Why are we adding those now and not talking about that in the budget, for the budget? Because I know we're going to have that discussion in finance at the next meeting about new hires and if it's necessary to really backfill all of the retirees. So in light of knowing that those questions are coming down, why are we voting to hire people? Shouldn't they be included in that, in that grouping, in the discussion?
So two separate, yeah, and two separate things, the transition coordinator and then the extracurricular contracts is your question?
I'm just saying that there's, there's a number of personnel there, that that's a number of positions that we're talking about.
And it's my understanding that the transition coordinator, Dr. G, I'll defer to you, is kind of a net neutral proposition. Can you further explain that?
Yes, the current transition coordinator has made a decision not to return to the district next year, so we are posting that internally as a position, and we will be utilizing one of our staff members if we find a successful candidate. So the reason we're posting it now is we, we do have transition school, we have transitioning for ESY over the summer, and the contract for the current transition coordinator is going to be ending at the end of ESY. We're hiring that position now so that the transition coordinator can transition, pun intended, with the new person that's hired, because there is a lot of behind the scenes that needs to be processed as far as securing the job sites, working with that coordinator to schedule, for scheduling, and there's just a lot of administrative work that needs to occur prior to his departure.
So why are we bringing it, though, from an, from an outside source to an inside source?
Quite honestly, I'm not quite sure why, why we haven't done it thus far. All of the transition coordinators that I have known are in-house, generally a teacher who has been certified, works at the high school, and becomes the transition coordinator. And there's more control as far as, we know our own students, so it's, it's a lot less of, it's more of a seamless process to place kids in our own neighboring job sites. Not that the current transition coordinator didn't do a wonderful job. He was, Rich was a wonderful asset to our district, but the logical, from a financial standpoint, we actually may be saving some money utilizing our own staff, especially depending on who we hire. Our current contract for the transition coordinator was exceeding $100,000 a year, including ESY.
This one, though, I don't know if I, can I say that, what this one was? Or maybe, I don't even need to say that. It was less than, it was less than that, but that, wouldn't this person then get benefits and Peasars? So wouldn't it end up actually being more than what we were paying for somebody that we outsourced, maybe?
Depending upon the person who's hired and where they are on the, the step as far as their contract, but essentially, yes, that's why we were saying cost neutral. If we hire someone in-house that is a 10-year teacher, the cost would be similar to what we were paying the outside provider, but the person that we backfill for that position may be a new teacher that we bring in at a much lesser cost.
But we're going from one person to two people, because if we take an in-house person that takes that position, now we've got to hire someone to replace the position that he or she left. So it is hiring one extra person.
We don't know for sure if that person that would be hired would be making less, so I'm not 100% sure it would be cost neutral if we have to end up paying for like insurance and Peasars and all that, like the benefit package could end up being more than what this other person was making from the outside, and we don't really know what the new, potentially a new teacher would make, depending on where they came in, because I know that some of the, the pieces have been big, but I don't know that that even answers my question, though, of why are we considering? I, I guess it does in a sense, but then would we be double paying too? Would we be paying this new person and still paying that other person for that period of time in transition, so to speak? Like overlapping?
The current transition coordinator is, is contracted until the end of this year and has signed on to extend his contract until the end of ESY. So depending upon when the transition coordinator that we hire in-house starts that position, they're, if it is a teacher, they're not obligated to work in the summer. They essentially could start in September, but there may be some layover time in the summer where they have to work together.
So the answer to Mrs. C's question is yes. There would be a double dip over, over a period of time.
Well, regardless, conversely, if we hire another contracted employee, there's going to have to be some transition between the exiting of the transition, the current transition coordinator and the bringing in of the new one.
But why are we going this route to address this? This will be a new employee by definition.
Correct.
Which we have not established the budget, and not that this should be as part of the budget discussion, not isolated in a vacuum for us to vote on now.
But I think that's what I'm getting at, that, you know, I know Mr. Rizzo is going to give us a priority list of the positions for the new hires, and we're going to discuss that. I would just think that that's where we, we would see this maybe there, not necessarily here. And, and to your point too, Mr. Schaefer, you had mentioned during your extracurricular report about getting some input to know what the financial impact is, you know, of, of supporting and adding clubs and, and people for those roles, which I don't disagree with. I'm just saying that we, I think we need to see that, that picture, right? Of what is it, what is it gonna, what's the impact going to be? So I guess it just, it concerns me greatly why these things are in here now. Maybe, maybe this transition coordinator should be like priority number one when Mr. Rizzo is giving us that list of new hires. I'm not, that's just my question about where we are with that.
So we can't always anticipate when a contractor will make the decision to, to leave, and this actually is occurring, which is good of the contractor, I think, at the end of one school year. But my question, just with this, all this transition, which is such a vital role for our students, do you believe that this is in the best, doing it this way is in the best interest of our students that would be utilizing this transition coordinator?
I'm sorry, Dr. G, before you enter that as well, adding on to that, for those in the public that don't know, what is a transition coordinator? Because it sounds very kind of sterile, right? Do, would you mind sharing and just maybe summarizing, what does this person do?
Sure. So a transition coordinator works closely with the students beginning at the age of, usually transition starts at 14, but once they get up into high school, starting around 10th, ninth and 10th grade, students go out to job sites, whether it is a local Chick-fil-A or they go to a workshop type activity or place, or whether or not they're at the local YMCA, working with a job coach. So we have job coaches that go out and work along with students. We have about 53 current transition students in our high school, and at any given time, two, three days a week, they go out for two hours, depending on where their job is located, with a job coach, or some of the students go out in isolation because they've gotten to the level where they can work by themselves, they're dropped off and picked back up. Some of our students also go to local elementary schools. We have a number of kids that are going to be transitioning into the cafeterias and working with alongside some of our elementary buildings in the cafeteria, cafeteria work. So that's really, we're preparing students for post-secondary either education and/or work job sites. So it's critical for our transition coordinator to not only know the area in Springford, but to also be aware of the different available businesses and have those relationships within this area so that we can have potential job sites moving forward for our students. Mr. Widener has done a fantastic job over the past 17 years, but he has expressed that he no longer is interested in, in continuing to contract with our district. Coming from different, three different districts, we've had our own transition coordinator and had a lot of success with our in-house transition coordinator in the sense that they work closely with our high school special ed supervisor as long, as well as our job coaches, and just know the community a little bit better because they're generally a teacher in the district. That's primarily, was my primary goal, and however, if you want me to, you know, explore other options with looking at other outside contracted employees, we can certainly explore that.
Was he with a company?
My question?
Yes. So going back to Dr. Wright's question, thank you for the summary. Do you find this approach to be, in your opinion, the best interest of the district and the students?
100%, yes.
Just a, sorry, Clint.
I think we all agree that it's a good approach. Not sure it's the best approach from a financial perspective.
Right. And so when I say approach, you know, what I'm speaking to is specifically bringing the coordinator position in-house. But of course, you know, there are a lot of dependencies with that, as you talked about, depending on who is hired for this, that will ultimately dictate the end result from a financial standpoint, Mr. Jackson.
I agree, Madam President. I agree.
So just a minor suggestion, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if it wouldn't burden the process too much. I think the reason for the, the pause is financial in nature, and so perhaps maybe adding on there that the candidate would not exceed fully burdens whatever we had in the budget this year. Now recognizing that they've, moving forward, okay, there may be a larger impact because it's, it's now a part of, you know, it's a teacher, it's a full-time employee or, or something of the like, but, but do you think that would limit the opportunity to, to fill the position? I mean, or it's just a suggestion, maybe, that that keeps the cost at a, at a cost neutral for this?
Are we suggesting putting a cap on the total expense for the position?
Yeah.
Okay, that limits, I guess we could do whatever, but that limits the pool. Whenever we post to this position, that limits who we can and can't put in that position.
Yep, well aware of that.
Yeah.
Is the current coordinator, did he give a reason for why he did not want to renew his contract?
Not necessarily. He just expressed that he was, he was, he was going in a different.
We don't need to go there, I don't think.
Well, he's, it's a contractor, it's not an employee. So I mean, it's a, you have, you have an independent contract with him. So, I mean, if it's personal related issues, we don't want to raise it, but, you know, it's a one-year, it's one-year renewals. So if he decided to end the contract, could have been for any reason, moving to Mars. I mean, it doesn't really matter.
I don't disagree that we need this transition coordinator. I still question whether in or out, right, of the building, but I guess my biggest issue still really remains, is this something, because you're saying this other person is here through ESY, and I know you want some transition period of time. That person that's leaving though should leave good documentation of his relationships with the outside sources, and has plenty of time to document, and, and that, all of that. Is this possible that this is one of those positions that you could ask Mr. Rizzo to prioritize and that we could perhaps take care of it at that time with the look at all of the new hires as opposed to doing it outside that window? I guess that's kind of my.
The answer is yes, we could do that. We could make that part of that process. The timing of when we actually get somebody in a position might preclude us from maybe having some of the transition or overlap time we might be looking for, depending upon what the board supports and how we move forward. Yes, we could certainly do that.
Well, I'm only one person. I mean, if, if the rest of the board doesn't want to do that, it's fine. It's just my perspective because we're in this budget crunch, right? And we're going to have that look at the next meeting. Is that right, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am. We will reevaluate your chunks.
I am concerned. I know that we have, Ms. Lee has expressed in the past the difficulty in finding good candidates that meet the specific needs for our students, and I know that we at Springford really value getting the best candidates that we can for the district. So my, I would just have to say, in my view, as a board member, anything that would limit that selection of a candidate, I would, I would be hesitant to put a limitation on that selection of a candidate, I would be hesitant to put a limitation on that. So that's just my, my opinion, thank you.
Well, this is a very fluid process with a lot of unknowns that we do not control. So I struggle with the process that we're trying to push this through. That's, that's my, that is my challenge with this, because we could apply this approach to any position and have justification for it based on that approach.
The way that I follow your question and your thought process, I think, you know, it does make good sense because while we are in budget season, where we're looking at everything, the work of the district still goes on at the same time. So is there typically a cutoff point when we're looking at positions in this time of year, where when you're like, if Ms. Lee or Dr. G or Mr. Rizzo could explain that, like, because needs will come up regardless of where we are in the budget cycle. But now that these are kind of running parallel, is there a time when you have a need that you say this, this will be addressed during the budget discussion or how it's presented here? So is there a general rule of thumb? Because I under, you know, I hear you and I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, I also understand that the work of the district has to continue. So is there some sort of cutoff?
I would speak as the Chair of Finance. There's no.
I guess I was asking from more of like a district.
But you're asking, you're asking, is there a format?
No, I think she's asking the administration what factors go into play when you decide whether or not to put something on the agenda for March like this versus waiting a month and having that discussion. So is there, what delineation is there as to why you would do one versus the other?
We, we've looked at this previously based on the need of the position. If Dr. G decided to resign, okay, that would, in my mind, would be a priority item that we could go through this process with, based on the needs of a district globally. This position here, I don't think meets that criteria.
Does the administration, can I ask, does the administration feel differently about that?
I do. And the reason I feel, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. G, and then we'll defer to.
The reason for the expediency for this position is because it's not just a teaching position where it's in-house. This person has to, to secure the job sites. We have students that have these positions, job sites being written into I E Ps from now until the end of the school year. So for someone to just start in September, going out to new job sites that they've never been to before is, is highly unlikely without a lot of interruption and potential delaying of students actually getting to their job sites. Because it's not replacing a teacher, it's replacing someone that's out in the community with students. So it's a little bit different than the natural process for hiring.
But wouldn't this person, I use this term, live in this industry already?
The transition coordinator that we're hiring?
If we hired someone, wouldn't that be someone who's already in that orb? This wouldn't be someone green?
It would depend on if, who we hire. If we, if we hire someone in-house, in a teacher, we currently have job coaches and we have teachers that work with students that go out to job sites that know it, but they haven't functioned as a transition coordinator.
Ballpark, how many of these, how many of these sites does this person have to get? Just ballpark, is it 50, is it 100? I mean, how many of these relationships are they looking to form?
I would say about 25 or 30.
Okay, so let's just say then, with that 25 or 30 being, you know, a heavy lift and that you wanted to do this, could we, could we put this down as one new hire? Could we, could we document that for the budget process? That we've already made steps to approve this, this one, that this would be new hire number one on that list? You understand what I'm saying, Mr. Rizzo? Like you present a list of priorities, I'm saying we've already got one on that list that we're accepting or approving. Is that something that we could do?
I could not guarantee the timeline of the person being hired to be able to meet the needs, but yes, we could do that. Ms. Lee, do you have anything else you want to offer?
That's what I'm trying to get away from the whole, to avoid the crunch of the timeline and meet what Dr. G is saying. Say we go ahead and move forward with it as it is here and just document it for the budget purposes or for the purposes of reviewing the new hires, that hey, we already did this, make note of that, this is.
I think that's part of it, is like, you see it on, so what you're saying is, we have it on the agenda, we vote on it next week, but when we have that meeting in April, that it is taken in consideration that this was a, whatever, an item, you know, a number one, a number one role or a top priority role, and it's taken into consideration when we think about the other decisions that were being made.
Yes.
Ms. Hermans, I would like my question to be answered by administration, if possible.
Let me clarify, I will absolutely ask Mr. Rizzo to do that, but going back to, can we do that? I mean, because at this point, let me just say, yes, Mrs. Deirdre, if I'll have him answer your question, please do so, Mr. Rizzo. But we are kind of getting in the weeds here, and I think we need to decide whether or not we are going to keep this motion, or keep this motion on the agenda for next week or we're taking it off.
So are you making a motion to do that?
I'm not making any motion. At this point, I just want to, I want to move forward with what Mrs. Zazowski mentioned, which is if Dr. G is in fact saying that this is imperative, and by the way, I have observed the, the, I don't know what you call it, the graduation at the year end where Rich has come in and he's talked, so everything you're saying very much resonates with me in terms of how important this person is to be connected to the community and that the ramp up time might be a little longer, since I did observe him firsthand. Can we, I guess, yeah, maybe I'm asking, is there the will of the board to keep this on the agenda for next week?
And let it be duly noted that it's new hire number one.
I really would like to hear from Beth Lee also.
Yes. Mr. Rizzo, please first, and then we can defer to Beth.
So that, I want to make sure that I understand, lots been thrown around. So you're saying that proceed with this, but make sure that as we go through our ones, twos and threes on our new position, that it is articulated on there and not omitted from that list? Is that what you're saying?
Articulated on there that it has been accepted and approved, that we're already going forward with that.
Okay, yes. Ms. Lee, can you give some follow-up, please?
I just want to clarify, what are you asking her to follow up on, what you just said, or what I asked 20 minutes ago?
I think what you asked.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Deirdre, would you please clarify your original question? I'm just wondering, I guess, is there currently a process in place, like a cutoff time so that we're not in this position, right? So that, I understand that there's work of the district that goes on regardless of where we are in the budget season, but at one point when you identify that we have a need, do you stop and say, this should be brought up as part of the prioritized budget list? Or I think what I'm gathering is that administration feels so strongly that we need this to start sooner, so we want it observed in this format. So I'm wondering if there is a process where you had that decided, because I feel like it's being implied that this is just being thrown on here for us to discuss and it needs to be done at budget time. So if you could speak to what your process is, I would appreciate that. Certainly. So when there is a resignation or retirement, that position is looked to be filled as quickly as possible if it does occur during the school year? Any resignation, retirement that would be effective at the end of the school year wouldn't be classified as a new position for the upcoming school year, we would go ahead and post those jobs as we've already done for our January retirements. For a position such as this, where it's currently filled by an independent contractor, but it serves a need for our school district, what, especially given the needs of this particular position and the need for the person to build the relationships within the community, the thought process was if we could get the position approved and get the job description approved, that we might be able to get a jump on the posting. Finding individuals with special ed certification at the secondary level is very, very difficult right now, so it was just hoping that we could get a jump on it. If this position is filled internally, I will need to backfill with an outside candidate. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments?
This is the meeting that we have these deep dive discussions, that is the reason for the work session.
Yep.
So if we go deep, that's the purpose of this meeting.
No implication, Mr. Jackson.
I know. Thank you.
So with that said, I think what it sounds like, and please, anyone at the table, correct me if I'm wrong, that we are going to move forward with this on the agenda for next week, and then when we come to the table at finance to talk about personnel, it will be noted that this was a top priority position, a number one position, and we will make further decisions with regards to personnel, taking this into account.
But we wouldn't have to do that if we vote on it next week, correct? Continue it into the next year.
So I would say we would not have to do that, but to provide the clarity of the new positions that we're adding, to see the number in total, and I think it makes sense for it to be on there. But we would make a note that this part was already approved by the board, where the other ones have not yet been, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or not approved by the board.
Yes.
Or not.
Okay. All right. Any other questions with personnel?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, because we can go deeper. That's what the working session is for.
All right. Moving on to finance, section seven, A through H. And I do want to make one update, which is to letter H, although we won't be going into the specifics of this, we do need to make a slight adjustment to the number. The number, which will be updated for next week's agenda, is 153,500. So another $1,500. Any questions or comments?
I have a question kindly on letter E. So, you know, I'm serving on my third term here. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit obviously provides the district and many others with tremendous amount of support and services. And I realize that this is an item for just $3,000, so, but it's one of these things that, you know, I feel like is like death by a thousand cuts here. What can we say no to this? Like, what, it seems like there's just an increase just because, or is there any other additional context? And again, my apologies at after nine o'clock for a $3,000 item in finance, but it just stuck out at me.
Who would like to respond to that?
We have a relationship with the I U that doesn't, that does incur some of these costs for sure. Can we say no? I think, Dr. G, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of this cost also involves students in providing services to students, is that correct? So saying no to this denies some student services, but there are also other things that are not necessarily student-related that we could, we could question. But, Ms. Richard, do you have further, I don't want to misspeak.
I'll have to play Switzerland here a little bit as we're solicitor for the, for the I U. But there are, similar to what we have for the Western Center, articles of agreement and the like with regard to budget approval processes. So can the local board say no to this? Yeah, I mean, it's here for a reason, it's for board action. But I would have to refer to those documents as to, as to what happens if that were to occur. I have never really seen it, but, but I certainly can review that.
So, and sitting on the, on the Board of Directors for the I U, as I do representing Springford, this was, they brought their budget proposal forward, and I think I discussed that at our last meeting when I did our update for the I U. And their budget had gone up the 2.86% due to the added expenses, and that was the approved amount that it went up. You know, so it was their, their budget is approval, so.
But just so we clear, this board can say no. Then nothing prohibit us from saying no.
And I think we went through this when we talked about, also with the tech center too. I mean, that, I, I would have to look into it further too, but I mean, I assume that we have that ability to say no, to vote no about it, whether that, how that impacts their, their passing of the bill. I mean, we can say no to it, but I don't know that we can say no to the finances.
I mean, the I U's, you pay the I U in two ways. One is this general operating expense, which is 120,000 a year, that's to keep the lights on down in Norristown. Everything else is à la carte that you spend on, on the I U. That's your, you know, emotional support classrooms that you send kids to, transportation to the Anderson School, various, various programs. That's the much bigger number, but that's basically a per student basis. This is just really, just the operational component of the I U. In terms of the question, the what happens if there's a no vote, I would suggest maybe Mr. Rizzo, contact the, the administration tomorrow down there to kind of see operationally how that plays out. Again, I started this party, I, I wasn't leaning towards the, I just didn't, I didn't know. And I mean, I prefaced it in the beginning, I said, I've been here for a little bit. And so I appreciate the additional dialogue, some of that help, thank you.
Just to add a little bit to that, about, because Western Center does, I mean, I think it's a similar maybe scenario, so to speak, but the Western Center needs quite a bit, and we've alluded to that certainly over time. And I will be very excited to see next week the presentation that they're going to come and do here and talk about that budget. But there should be an increase there as well. And I tend to think it's pretty slight in terms of what they need, but, you know, the full board here is going to have that presentation as well as the two other sending schools, getting, sending districts getting that information, and will all be deciding yea or nay on that as well, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? With finance? Nope? Okay, moving on to section eight, property, A through D.
So B, we talked a little bit about that at the property meeting, and Mr. Hunter, is there any hope of, have you had any luck or you've had even an opportunity to reach out to an auctioneer or the auctioneer that you've worked with prior about some of these other things that will be going out? I know not the things that would create a liability, of course, but maybe some of the other items to offset 282,000 dollars of spend right now?
Yes, I did not have the opportunity to speak with Mark Ekins as far as the auctions concerned, but we do have some time, obviously. We purchased this furniture, that transition would be sometime between when it's delivered, it would be over this summer. So I certainly plan on doing that and I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions with property, A through D? All right, we're moving on to programming and curriculum, A through I. I do have one thing to echo with regards to letter I. So I want to thank Mrs. Gardi, Dr. Murray, and your team for coming forward and presenting on the ELA curriculum, right, that you're bringing forward. I think that there, especially since I know that the board has received comments from the public, both in person as well as through email, I know how important it is for our community to feel good about the fact that this is a structured literacy program, which is a little bit different from what we have been using. So I really appreciate the presentation, it was very thorough. I just want to echo some of the comments that I made in curriculum in this forum, just to say that, you know, I think while we're all very happy with the product, even, you know, a great product, as you know, a great product can be mediocre with a lack of implementation, or a mediocre product can be great with, you know, a very clear implementation plan. And so, you know, when I look at this, I, you know, the 1.5 million, like to me, I said, I don't really balk at, because I know how important this is for a community, and while that's the initial cost that we're seeing right here, you know, there are going to be a lot of indirect benefits to this, like in terms of, you know, I even think about like special education referrals, right? The fact that with a program like this and strong implementation, we're going to be able to systematically address the literacy needs of students in a, in a more formalized, systematic way to the masses, which, you know, as we said, could limit potential referrals, indirect costs down the road. So I heard a lot of great things in that meeting with regards to professional development, with regards to how you're thinking about it over the next, you know, six months. And I don't want to discount the fact that you have been working on the implementation of this even before now, today, but. But I would really like to understand, because like, when it comes to success, like, how are we defining success when it comes to this? And it's not a question to answer right now, but I know that our literacy rates, you know, especially coming out of the pandemic, are not where we want it to be as it relates to a various number of data points that we oftentimes get reporting on. You know, and to no fault of anyone's, right? It's a situation that all of public educators are in at this point. But I think it's, you know, in my own opinion, if we see an increase in these scores and more consistency in the scores across our elementary schools from building to building, I think that's a win. And I don't really know where we stand today with it. I know that we've, Dr. G, I think it was a CPAC meeting where we had Mrs. Hiller present on literacy, where we are now. I don't know if it was just specific to special education or if it was the broad Spring Ford. But, you know, for me, it would be helpful for me to get grounded on where are we today? So that as we keep progress on the implementation of this, we know that this investment, we're doing things right. We're implementing best practices based on what other districts, right, have done, what they haven't done or choose, you know, or encouraging us not to do. I just want to make sure that we get it right. So I don't know that I haven't asked right now, other than that we keep that in mind as we move forward, because I do think it's important to monitor progress.
Sure, I think that's fair enough. And I just want to make sure, just to give credit to Katie Gardi and Brianna Angelucci. They've really taken the lift on this, and they've done a fantastic job of reviewing products. And as you mentioned, too, I think that they've already started the implementation plan so that they can hit the ground running, hopefully, once we get approval to move forward with this. But certainly, they have already started those conversations, too, about how to measure that success as well. So I know that's part of the conversations that they're having with the implementation.
And so is that something that we would be updated in the curriculum meeting periodically about? I don't know that we've talked about frequency or, you know, what that looks like over the next year. But is that what you guys have in your back pocket?
Sure, I think, and Katie, please step in if I'm misspeaking here. But I think curriculum would definitely, curriculum committee would be the best avenue for that. The one thing I do want to caution, too, is that we have a lot of data points. And with any new program, especially a large lift, you know, we are going to keep our eye on the data. We're going to continue to use a data tweak. But there's always going to be an implementation phase where you're, you know, we have to give our teachers the opportunity to take some risks and learn. And there is going to be a learning curve with that, too. So I think that's part of it, but we keep an eye on the data, but give our teachers some flexibility to take some risks and learn a new program. And, you know, I do believe that when we have our foot on the accelerator and really looking at the data, that it will pay off. But I think the curriculum and tech is probably, committee is probably the best avenue to report out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, the 1.4 mil. We're looking at implementation upon approval being 23, I mean, 24?
I'm sorry, one more time?
To implement item I, are we looking at that for the year '24, '25?
'23, '24, correct, Katie?
'23, '24, the start, we're trying to get it, we're working to get it off the ground right away.
There'd be professional development during, in May. And Katie, please, again, step in if I'm misspeaking here, in May. And then implementation would be next school year.
And the seven, explain the seven years to me. I'm not that smart with this.
So we have a curriculum cycle. And in the curriculum cycle is kind of our process of systematically looking at certain courses and grade levels. And that cycle is about seven years. And so the idea behind that is that it allocates both funding and also priority within those specific years. So our ELA is coming up for renewal now. And so then that product would be good for seven years. That's part of that seven-year renewal. We are finding some of our vendors are not giving us seven-year renewals. But that's typically our process. When you look at something like ELA and math, those tend to be very big-ticket items. And also, our elementary teachers are implementing both math and ELA. So we spread those out so that they're not doing too big adoptions in one year.
And the 1.4 mil, or around that 1.5, this is an all-in cost? Is there, the door open for additional costs as we implement this? Or is this all-in?
I'm going to defer to Brianna and Katie on this. They've really worked with the vendor regarding that quote.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That is an all-in cost for seven years. That includes the professional development for the next school year, as well as all the consumables that will come on the subsequent years.
And there's been good feedback from the staff on this potential?
Yeah, that was shared at the curriculum meeting. There was the feedback from the teachers.
I was asking.
I know, I know. I would love for you to come to our curriculum meetings. I show up for your meetings whenever I can for property. And ours are really exciting and well-attended also. I'm just saying. You can also view them online. They're streamed, too, and have all this information.
Yeah, me and Zoom don't get along too well.
Going back, Mrs. Gardi, could you answer Mr. Jackson's question? Or Ms. Angelucci? I can't see behind the public. My apologies.
Thank you. Yes, so we put together a team of teachers across all of the grade levels, including special ed teachers as well, ELD teachers, and we collected a lot of feedback from teachers. We had committee meetings. And I also visited the buildings to speak with them one-on-one and receive their feedback. And there has been a lot of positive feedback about this recommendation.
All right, thank you. And Dr. Wright, I will make a point of attending your committee meeting next month.
That sounds like it's coming with a be careful what you ask for, Dr. Wright.
Absolutely.
There was also, the presentation was also attached to, in the board MO2, which also explained all of that, too.
Thank you.
I for one look forward to it, Mr. Jackson. Any other questions with programming and curriculum?
I have a couple of questions on this. So what's being, what's it replacing?
Journeys?
The Journeys, okay. And this is more of a science-based program?
It is. And again, I'll defer to Brianna, who's done the research on it, to talk specifics about the program.
It's fine. I just wanted to know that it is. Replacing Journeys, what is the savings there that we, is that offsetting that number already?
The Journeys contract ends on June 30th, 2023. So that was in the curriculum cycle. So this contract that we have with Journeys was through just this school year. So it would be part of it, any renewal would have had to come for '23, '24.
Right, I was just wondering what the price difference was compared, like, from Journeys to doing this, I imagine. But this is pretty, more expensive, correct?
Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong, but Journeys is also being sunset and could no longer be used past the school year. Is that correct?
Our contract was through 2023, but they would have that product through 2025, I believe. But we would have to renew that and pay more money for it. To what Mrs. Zazowski asked, I believe we spent just under $1 million back in 20, that fall of 2015, when we purchased Journeys. So, yes, it's more expensive than that payment back in 20, well, we paid it in 2016. But it is significantly higher than that payment. But over the course of that number of years, it's pretty much on par. Mrs. Angelucci did get many other quotes, not just this one. And they're all within that 1.2 to 1.6 million dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to conferences and workshops, letters A through D.
Separate D.
We're not voting today. We will certainly separate D next week. Don't you worry. I will be the one to say it.
I'm trying to balance the budget, you know that.
I appreciate it. I will pay the $25 out of pocket. Mark my words. All right. Moving on to other business, section 11, A, B, C, and D.
So if you're looking at D there, this is the board approval for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, since this is a position that I currently hold. And it's one that's in a different cycle, the IU, than what we have here. So it would be, the request would be that it would be, that I would be able to continue in that role, so.
Do we have a, you're terming out? Are you terming out this time?
I am, yes. Took the place of a board member also who had termed out, too.
Thanks for that additional information. Okay, I mean, we run the risk if you, I don't know if you're running it again or not, but perhaps we, she is, okay. Perhaps we should maybe consider having somebody that's not terming out.
That has never been a consideration in the past.
That's lovely to hear. Bad decisions in the past don't necessarily predict good decisions in the future. So I'm just throwing it out there, that's all.
So, no, thank you for throwing that out. And Mr. Rizzo, you know, maybe, or Mr. Fitzgerald, you could let us know what the impact would be. But, you know, when we assigned committee roles in December, you know, there were a few folks, you know, Mrs. Zazowski, I know you were passionate about serving, continuing to serve on the JOC, you know, in spite of the fact that it would be one year and that we would, at that point, handle a reappointment at the next reorg. So is that kind of similar in this situation where we could do that, Mr. Fitzgerald?
If it's the desire of the board to reappoint Dr. Wright to that position, with the understanding that, you know, her current term is up in December and she's running for reelection, that is fine. It's really the board's prerogative who they appoint under the circumstances.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to board comment.
I have a quick comment that I want to make. While, Dr. Wright, I thought it was nice that you invited Clinton. And I'm sure that invitation is out there for us all to attend committee meetings. And I do the same would invite in terms of an invitation. I just want to say that if we're not at those meetings, it's not because maybe we don't have a vested interest, but more because, you know, life can get in the way. There are some other things. And the whole reason that the committee structure is there is so that people can go and do the work of the committees and then report back to the full board. So I don't want to say under any circumstances that I'm never going to come to one of anybody else's meetings. But please, let's just keep that in mind, that if it's not there, it's not maybe because we don't want to be, but maybe we can't be at every, every event that happens.
Agreed.
No, I just don't want to be there, let's be honest.
I would like to be there, but I can't always commit to that.
So, board comment. Our committee meetings are held in the district office. And as much as I enjoy finance and property being the most important meeting in the district, I would like the board to consider relocating those committee meetings to this facility. I just feel like people are on top of each other. When residents or even board members arrive late, there is a disruption. The conversations, you can hear conversations on top of conversations, which I find to be somewhat disruptive. So I would just like the board to consider having all of our meetings, committee meetings, right here. It's the same setup that we would have. But I think just from an overall structure for production from where I sit, I would like for the board to consider relocating the meetings to the cafeteria. Thank you.
Would we have, we would have more requirements in terms of setup and cleanup to use this space, correct?
That would be a significant challenge. If that's what the board wants to do, we could do that. But our staff sets up and tears down, this is set up for lunch every day. Our staff sets up and tears down for these meetings. If we're going to add those other meetings, we can do that. But that's going to place a significant burden on our custodians and maintenance workers to get this kind of reset. We could do it.
It is stressed to the board comment.
Yeah, what about, what about the, I mean, perhaps we can talk about this in terms of other options, like the room that's down the hallway? I don't know. The principal's conference room or the, that's it, yes.
Sure. So we had a discussion a while back, and I said, let's get the new furniture. Let's see what it looks like. If we're finding that space to be substandard, then we can certainly find another place. We can go back to the conference room that we were in prior to. It's really not much bigger than the space we're already in, but it is a little bit bigger. It does give a little bit more breathing space. If you want us to look for another place, we can certainly do that. The HERDA could work, but there's a lot of activity down there, which may or may not be disruptive. We want to find something that's relatively quiet. But if the board, if it's the will of the board to do that, we can certainly start flushing that out.
I don't find this substantial, substandard. I guess, to me, it just feels like we're on top of each other, especially when we have a large participation from the residents. Everybody's on top of each other. And you can hear the conversations, they can hear our, it doesn't sound right. The conversations that are going on, they all sort of blend together. And I'm just finding that the communication of the content isn't there with some of the residents. There are things that I've been asked that I know we talked about. But it just seems like we're on top of each other.
Yeah, I mean, you've extended us the latitude of trying that out with new furniture. If we find that it's not ideal, then we can certainly look into other options. We just want to make sure that if that's where we want to go, we want to find the right space. Because we do require additional staff to secure our areas if we're opening up our building to come in for meetings. So we just got to work that out. So if we go there, we can look into it.
It's stressed an item for discussion, not something that has to be imminent, but this is a discussion point. No, not six feet apart, but.
I think it flows, Mr. Jackson's question or proposal kind of flows in with policy 006 and how we're trying to streamline and copy the format from each committee meeting to each committee meeting, to be similar, perhaps, to the format here or just so that it's consistent within each committee meetings. And I don't feel like we're seeing that consistency yet. So hopefully, I don't know if now, you know, we kind of moved down to board comment from policy 006, kind of where the, like, the conversations are and things like that. So I don't know.
So maybe I could jump in here, because I'm perfectly fine with you stealing my thunder. That's okay. And I do want to say that, Mr. Jackson, like, I did hear you loud and clear in December. At the time, I don't think there was the will of the board to investigate the new room, especially in light of the fact that new furniture was kind of upon us. However, I do think that we should keep it in mind. And especially, you know, while you said, like, maybe not eminent, you know, really kind of test us out and see how we feel by year end. And if we need to make a change, maybe give the administration some time over the summer to kind of rethink what would be the next best step with that. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. But to Mrs. Deardorff's point, I wanted to make board comment. And specifically because under policy 006 and 006.1 was referenced. And, you know, I did attend the committee, all the committee meetings this month. And I had two observations that I wanted to share. One of which was that we had a lot of new faces in the room for really almost every meeting, from curriculum to finance to property, which I think is a great thing, because it means that new faces are engaging with the district, hearing the work of the district. And I think that's only a positive. The second observation I had is that public comment is not always public comment. So I know that, you know, when I assumed board presidency, I had the opportunity to talk to everyone individually, to kind of get your perspective on, like, really what's working, what's not working. And I think one of the things that bubbled up to the top, as you could tell by the comments that we just had in board comment, was committee meeting structure. So I think we have made great progress. I mean, frankly, I do think, I don't want to just say that, you know, the public comment was inconsistent last week, but I think that we've made great promise as a board, kind of having the chairs own the meetings. You know, of course, having flexibility to run the meetings the way they see fit. But I think that there has been some things in terms of noncommittee members sitting in the audience, being consistent throughout. So I do think that we are making great progress when it comes to the experience, making sure that the experience is consistent, meeting to meeting, for the public, which is really what this is all about. However, to no one person's fault, you know, I do feel that we took a little bit of a step back last week for two reasons. Number one, you know, as I mentioned, there were a lot of faces in the room. And myself, and I know a couple other board members, had communicated with me that some of the public was a little taken aback with regards to how public comment transpired. In that public comment was not only common, and it led to some confusion for those that were newer to the committee meetings. And number two- for those that were newer to the committee meetings. And number two, it's, you know, I think that there was an instance where a question was asked in public comment in a committee meeting that really toed the line of what is covered under executive session privilege. And I want to thank Mr. Rizzo for kind of nipping that in the bud and realizing that in the moment, because I do think that that is a potential detriment to the districts, to the staff, to the students potentially. Had that question kind of spiraled and went into places that frankly, it should not be discussed in public. So I really appreciate Mr. Rizzo stepping in there. And so where I'm going with this is I think that there are, you know, again, some in the community, and to no one's fault, I think we've been conditioned to expect a response, to have that dialogue and public comment. And while I think that everyone has a right to ask a question in public comment, they also deserve a well-thought-out response. It's not fair for the administration to have to be put on the defense, to have a knee-jerk reaction to something that might actually be better suited to take offline. And so, you know, as we look forward to voting on 006.1 next week, which I think we were all, for the most part, like, providing some input with regards to what that structure should look like, I really would like to ask that, as we head into April committees, that we keep in mind a couple of things that frankly, I think we all know. Like, number one is that everyone in the room has to state their name and their township of residence. Even if you are a regular, and even if you know, us board members, we know the community, the fact of the matter is there's people in Zoom in the room that don't. So, you know, we need to get back to that basic. The second thing is having public comment be held to three minutes, no exceptions. And I don't know if there's a way to get a timer, I know, Mr. Jackson, I think you had it at one committee meeting, like, an actual stopwatch, or something to keep track of that. So to make that visible for the public, or to make that public aware that it is held to three minutes, no exceptions, because that, those are the rules, and we want to treat everyone fairly. I'd like to keep that in mind. And then lastly, the, you know, making sure that public comment is in fact comment. Because in some cases, I don't know that the public even realizes that they are in fact asking a question. So for example, a lot of what I heard was, my first comment is, and then it would be a question. And then my second comment is, and then it would be another question. So I think we need to really kind of reevaluate how we address those situations in the moment, because, you know, it's not a dialogue. You know, there is appropriate forums for dialogue. I've met with three people in the last week, another one this week, to have one-on-one conversations. There is email, there is other avenues for that, and I just want to make sure that we're having the right dialogue in the right forums. So, that's it.
I guess my challenge with that, Madam President, is during COVID, and I think that's the foundation of where we are now. During COVID, there were a lot of questions, and at times, the entire board, along with the rest of the country, was trying to figure out what was going on. And what we found at that time was, we dressed, didn't have answers. There were questions being asked that we didn't have answers. So the board, in its infinite wisdom, we basically stopped trying to answer, because we didn't have answers that we were comfortable with, and, you know, we just didn't know. And I think at, at times, I agree that public comment should be public comment, but at the same time, if there is information that is being shared by a resident that is not true, it needs to be addressed, i.e. when the question was asked regarding the developer. So I, I think there has to be some latitude in there based on the nature of the question that's being put out there. Because I don't want, I don't want people to leave here with misinformation because we didn't answer.
And I think there is a, so I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. There is a time, and you probably saw me today, correct some misinformation that happened in public comments. So I think it is incumbent upon the chair to do that. What I think is, as a result of kind of the experience that you talked about, which was COVID, you know, our public has become conditioned to think that public comment is a dialogue, is a back-and-forth, is sense of entitlement with regards to the answers. And yes, we want to be able to have that conversation with you, but that is not the time or place. And so I don't disagree with you, and I would never take away from a chairperson's, right, ability to correct misinformation. I think that's part of your job as chair. But I just think some of the things that we do in this forum, in a voting meeting, in a, in a board meeting, should translate to committee meetings as well. And I think we all agree, it's just a matter of, of just kind of resetting, resetting, frankly.
And that goes back to my point about a, a different venue of location. I think tying that in, tying that in together creates the proper format, set of dynamics. And I wasn't saying it wasn't imminent being to the end of the year, you can move that up a couple of months, Madam President, but that's part of my, that was part of my original comment regarding location or locale. Thank you.
Yep, and thank you for all the chairpeople, you know, who are managing the meeting. I know it's not always easy, so I do appreciate your efforts. Mrs. Zazowski?
I'm going to say, I think this dialogue or question-and-answer format was heightened during COVID, but I don't think that it was founded during COVID. I recall many conversations in policy, when doing use of facilities, and during transportation revisions, and things of that sort, that, you know, questions would come up that we would address in the time, because it was somewhat easier to do that than it was to go back after a whole meeting, or after hashing out a whole thing, and realizing that maybe somebody had some insight or something to contribute that was valuable. And we wanted them to know that they were heard, and there were times where that information was considered. So I do think that there needs to be some general guidelines, and then some latitude and flexibility, and that that will make us most productive in how we go forward.
In addition, we only had 2.3 people attend our meetings.
I was waiting for that comment, Mr. Jackson, I've heard you say it.
That is true.
It made it a lot easier.
Yeah, and so the environment has changed, which is what also is prompting this desire. So I just hope that we keep it in mind, and we test that out. I shouldn't say test it out, that we, you know, kind of just think about the norms that we have in this setting, and keep them in mind as we move to the committees in April. Thank you. Okay, any other board comment? All right, well then, we will move on to public to be heard. This does not have to be on agenda items. If we have anyone in the room that would like to approach the podium, please do so with your name and township of residence. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some rule.
Meeting adjourned.